Okay, yes it is.
All right, you wanna come to the table?
Sure.
So I'm gonna open the hearing, the hearing is now open.
Great, thank you Mr. Chairman. We're here tonight, hopefully our goal was to have a discussion with the board, a candid discussion, about the minutes and the decision of the June 13 meeting, which we believe the final product of which did not reflect the actual actions of this court. That's set forth in the petition for Superior Court. Again, we're hopefully we can work through a resolution to avoid a full-scale litigation, a viable litigation to preserve our rights.
Understood.
Statutory time.
Okay. That's, anything else?
That's essentially.
So I'll make a statement, I have to read my writings, so forgive me. We can make the following statement, we're willing to work with you to amend the subdivision to accurately reflect the conditions on the ground and the concerns of the board regarding emergency access. We acknowledge the Barnes Staff House and Lodge house have adequate year-round emergency access. And there you have it.
So what are the next steps?
I think the next steps are, this will be noticed as an amended subdivision application. The town has agreed to waive the noticing fees associated with that, correct me if I'm wrong. So you're correct, right?
Okay.
And this will be put on the board's, I don't know when you guys meet next? Well, with noticing though, I don't know if that's... Basically, basically Phil, we'll find a date where we can provide the needed notice.
The needed notice.
Yeah, and whenever that is, then the board will then have jurisdiction to have a discussion with you and your clients about amending the subdivision approval. And in the meantime, they've asked me to work with you to see if we can iron out the differences of opinion before that planning board hearing happens. And I, I've asked the board again, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I don't believe you guys need to submit an entire new package of materials because what's being amended is only, or potentially being amended is only the findings and some of the conclusions. So unless there are material changes in what you guys are seeking to do from the last go-around, which I doubt, then I think the board, I'm asking again to make sure that I'm not speaking out of turn here, I think the board will be fine with you not having to submit a complete package of materials.
So are you looking for us to submit anything, or is it sufficient to what we've done tonight?
I, I think that, I don't think you need to submit anything because I think that would be elevating form over substance a little bit.
Right, and I only ask because this whole process is an agreement across the, to my clients.
Understood, understood, yep.
The board needs to understand that that's a factor.
Yep, yep, no, and I think that from our side of the table, we recognize that and we're trying in good faith to streamline this such that we can under the law to see if we can work this out. But as we sit here right now, the board doesn't have jurisdiction to amend the subdivision because it wasn't noticed that way. And we want to make sure that if we are able to reach agreement and make everyone happy enough that they can go their separate ways, we want it to be as bulletproof as possible so that somebody else doesn't come along and challenge it and get it tossed back. So that's, that's the concern, and that's why we really can't do much more this evening.
Okay. You have any questions?
I'm just thinking in terms of cost, if the two of you are able to work out something that everybody's in agreement with, you've noticed the hearing, does Phil have to come up from concrete? Is that what you agree with?
I don't think that's an answer, something I can answer. So I think that's, that's up to you guys, I believe. I can tell you that from our side of the table, you know, the town would probably prefer that they not have to spend any more money on me either. So in terms of cost-saving measures, I think your interests align perfectly with the town. But that's obviously assuming that things can be worked out.
Right. Okay, okay, so do we have a date that we're thinking about at least? Give it on our calendar?
Yeah, if I get everything noticed again, which I'm using the same list and everything, I can have notices out tomorrow. So that will get us, I believe the 12th September could be, or the 26th are the two next meetings. So I think either one.
And I'm out of town for the 26th. And the 12th you said David was the other one?
12th is the other one.
I can do the 12th.
Can we get a warrant for the call?
Are you gonna be here?
You can't.
If you're gonna be?
I don't think you can do the 12th.
Well, we'll all be here.
Or come back that day. Just stop.
Alright, so I'll.
What is it, September or the 16th?
The 12th.
Oh, good, I'd like to have it right there.
My mother's birthday.
Well, ask her.
It's very helpful, thank you.
Yes.
We wish her happiness. Oh, she passed away last year.
I'm so sorry.
Steve, formally, will you accept service on behalf of the board and the town?
Um, I typically do, but where you guys have requested attorney's fees, we typically don't accept service in those circumstances. So I'd like to say yes, but given what you're asked for, I don't think I can.
We'll call the chair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Do you wanna close the hearing?
Yeah, I'm gonna close the hearing.
Yep.
And I wanna have a conversation, so could you just?
I'm gonna turn that off.
I'll take it out. Yep, remove it please.
Yep.
The next thing we gotta do is approve the minutes from August 8th. So does anybody have comments on those minutes?
They were good.
No? Nobody, Rich?
I wasn't here, so.
I was not here, y'all.
Oh, you weren't here?
I'm good as written.
I'm good as written? Alright, so I'd like to make a motion to approve as written. All those in favor, all those opposed?
I just have to stay because I wasn't here.
Well, you just, yeah, you know. Okay, so that's done. And I just, I thought that we'd go to item five, which is the build-out. So do you have, you were gonna add, add the parameters and?
I have just had zero time to.
So we should push us to the next meeting?
Yep.
All right.
And Rich, you had asked me for the hard, our electronic copies, that's still on my list of things to do.
Good, I'm worried that the message didn't get through or something.
It did get through.
Excellent.
Yeah, and David is including the parameters that?
Yeah, David and John and I met and came up with all of this.
Agreed on the numbers.
So that'll be reported in, when that, who are we talking about?
When he's done?
Good, thank you.
When you say reported, what do you mean?
We think that it's distributed, yes, yes.
Okay, so last time, we talked about zoning amendments and I asked everybody on the board whether they had ideas. And Vicky, you weren't here, and Rich, you weren't here. What, what the people who were there, and correct me if I'm wrong, thought that senior housing discussion that we were having and maybe some modification of this draft or something completely different, but that we would go down with the road of something to do with senior housing, possibly with some workforce housing or mixed use. So that we are now all up to date. So that said, what are, has anybody thought about it some more?
What, some idea?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I have a lot of concerns as it's, as it's written. So I wanted to ask, I wasn't here when this document was created, what are the goals? So let me, you don't have to respond, let me just throw out a bunch of questions that, what are the goals on this? Who do we think is gonna live there? What size units do we think would be there? Can you project a likely price point? Would there be ancillary services?
When you say, what does that mean, ancillary services?
Would there be a nursing station, would there be a dining room?
I heard that we got that far along. This, if you read the introduction, did you read the introduction?
Yeah.
It's basically a starting point for discussion, so it's all over.
Okay.
Well, I'd say that the goal is addressed by the objective 13.10 and that if we have goals, that's where that goes. And if none of these goals are actually real goals, then we should amend it to reflect the real goals.
So we can, I mean, this is the time to start having this conversation.
Okay. So. Diverse, so what, I mean, I'm not anxious to spend time wordsmithing this particular document.
I don't think that's necessary.
Okay, well, who, who all do we think are gonna live here?
Well, obviously, seniors.
On a certain age, right, but couples?
I don't know, what do you, why would you say, what do you think? I'm asking the question, what do you think?
Well, I mean, is this, do we think it should be like Kendall? Do we think it should be a nursing home? A lot of that might be up to whoever's gonna build it. So that's a really good question, who is gonna build this?
I don't know.
Have we spoken to anybody?
Well, I spent, as I know you were there, some of the time, but I spent a number of years going to it. The reason that I came up with this was because of aging place.
Aging place, right, right. And, you know, it was very clear to me that there was nobody in that meeting or we weren't suggesting to the people in that meeting were gonna have the ability.
No, that, what that was, what, I mean, what I'm getting from you, Rich, is basically you tell me, you're kinda saying what you, what you don't think is good. I'm not really interested in defending this document, this was put out there to start a discussion. You tell me, what do you, what do you think?
So I guess I would say, let's allow, I heard somebody say mixed use.
That was me.
It's really good. Let's, let's allow, I'm gonna be old here, let's allow something that would allow workforce housing as well. Multifamily dwellings. Units from maybe as small as 750, 800 through 12, 1500 square feet. These are, these have a reasonable chance of being interesting for developers. Look to minimize the number of regulatory hurdles that people have to go through so that in fact it becomes economically viable to them.
Okay, so why don't you write that up?
Okay, alright, cool. One thought I had, I know in here we were discussing that we're at least 85% of the guys who are 60 years old, and my thought would be it should be 100%.
Well, why don't you get a young wife, or a young, young husband?
Or you have three kids that live with you.
Alright, but you can say that one family's gonna live there.
Well, yeah, I think that could be addressed.
Yeah, that was just what I had.
I don't think we should, wouldn't people, you know, who might, or say I have a son with a disability and I'm old and I wanna live there with my son.
Just say it's a dog.
Well, you know, but, yeah, so.
Lime doesn't do relative, you know, doesn't restrict things to, I mean, I guess we could, but.
I'd like to, you know, that's just my thing. Because there's circumstances that we wouldn't want to exclude an older person who might have a younger husband or who might have a disabled child, you know, or, you know, adult child.
Yeah, no, I agree with that, I'm just saying, but that's a valid.
Yeah, we wanna be flexible.
And, you know, I mean, since, since I'm thinking about this, there's some talk in the preamble about lower services required for senior housing.
Lower services?
Lower level of town services. Secondly, it takes into account the need to deal with limes, increasing tax burden. Senior housing has the benefit of addressing the need while keeping what the product's impact on town services.
That was what the consultants, I mean, this was written before the consultants, but that's what the consultants found too, it was the most likely to be a net benefit, had the most potential to be a net benefit to town.
Is that, is that an important goal for zoning?
It's, I'm, it's not, I'm stating something that doesn't, it's a preamble. What do you have a problem with that?
I wonder if we were to start building.
We are, we are asked somewhere, somewhere in, I'm answering your question, okay? There is something in the, and correct me if I'm wrong, which says we do have a responsibility for the, what is it, provisions of, or the, I'll look it up. But anyway, go ahead.
Efficient provision of services, is that?
Yeah, that's what it was, yeah. So, yeah, to some degree, it's an, it's an issue, but this was a, is a general introduction. It's not a legal case for something.
So I, I will take, take your advice, let me write up what I think would make an attractive.
Okay, go ahead.
Attractive case.
So is that for the downtown, or for a downtown line that you'd be focusing on?
Why would not, why would it not be the rest of the line?
Oh, you want it to be?
I'm just asking you what you were intending to do.
Yeah, that would, that's a good question.
But I thought that this was.
This, this was.
This is focused on downtown.
Yes.
And, you know, I don't know the results of the tallies that you came up with for the line common build-out.
Oh, I can tell you.
Yeah, I think the thought was that seniors likely, generally like to be closer to the town.
Yeah, that's certainly what I came away with on the aging place. Seventy-five, I don't know. I think we came up with seventy-five additional. Sixty-one, of which would be conversions. And now seventy-five units, sixty-one conversions.
So total seventy-five, sixty-one would be conversion, can existing buildings converted and then fourteen new constructed? Okay. Okay.
So everybody, it's not just Rich, everybody is welcome to present whatever they did.
I just did some, well, Mike, so I wasn't here when it first started, right, the senior housing aspect. But my understanding of doing build-out analysis was to look and see under current planning and zoning regulations, what's doable. And that was the whole sort of thrust of the exercise. And to me, for the line common district, you know, my takeaway would be that there's surprisingly more capability for the town with respect to conversions and new construction to be able to build out, you know, for the people that have that desire to do so. And so, you know, to me, the summary is like, it really makes me beg to question, is there even anything that needs to happen as far as the amendment goes? Because, because you, to me, the question really was, okay, we wanna enhance, and see if we can have more senior housing developed, but, you know, what's the, what's the line common? What could it do under current conditions? The current conditions appears to me that there's, I don't know what to write for it, substantial?
Seventy-five million units is big for a line.
Is big, yeah, I mean, that, that's not organic growth, that's big. And so, and so it begs the question, does it really need to be any change at all? So you're saying that maybe we should wait and see if anybody is gonna actually build it? While we actually start changing? Well, I mean, I do like the idea of having some sort of incentive to.
Well, that's, that's really what's up. So it was to incentivize.
So maybe, so I'm good with that, right? So I think I could support, you know, heading in that direction, but beyond that, you know, to kinda expand its hall of town, whatever. I mean, I think that the premise was, you know, for senior housing, most folks wanna be close to the center. And so for this amendment, you know, or for what we're gonna do to try and incentivize people to do these conversions or new build, that ought to be the focus. Because I think if we go in and expand it, we tend to dilute it and complicate it. I think it is. That's my.
Okay.
Well, I think it is true that there should be some incentivizing to really make it happen. Who really wants some senior housing? So the question that I will ask is, who, who's gonna do this? Who do we think is going to take advantage of these, these additional, additional units? Given there's a very nice, you know, I don't, I've seen the final report, they're very nice homes. We are very fond of the very nice homes that are here. What's the economic incentive?
I'm not following you.
So who's gonna do this?
No, no, it's part of that, the very nice homes.
We have lovely homes in town. Whereas, but the very nature of this build-out is at some point, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but the whole point of a build-out analysis is that at some point when the value of lands and the value of units, housing units, is, goes, goes really high, what's the maximum number of units that the, that the current ordinance would allow in a, in a particular district or zone, or whatever you wanna talk about? And so that implies that the value of the property of those, of the potential units you put there, it gets extremely large. So I, I don't wanna pick out any property, I mean, I have the very same concerns we had as we were talking about, but pick a property on common, some house on common.
So make up a property.
Right, there's some house on the common, and we determined that it could be converted into six units. Or I can't.
Well, we have, we have.
Right, there's someplace we determined it could be converted into six units. So what's, what's the incentive for anybody to do that? That's not, so no.
I'm gonna run the meeting, Kevin.
It's not the planning board that becomes the chamber of commerce, that becomes the developer to assist. You know, the exercise from a planning perspective is what can the town do? What does planning zoning, you know, regulations allow? But as far as who does it and why, the commerciality of it, that's not, to me, a planning board work, not, or, or function. You know, it's, so Rich, I, I hear what you're saying. I, I mean, I think it's like a chamber of commerce, I think it's, you know, trying to figure out collectively, you know, if you own a property, you might go look for developers and all that. But that's like an individual development perspective. It's not the charge of the planning board to go look out and say, hey, you know, you know, put out an ad to the Wall Street Journal saying we're open for business.
But we just said we wanna offer an incentive for developers to do this.
But you can do that, well, you can do that, the amendment to the planning zoning regs that basically gives some sort of bonus, you know, dimensionality respect.
Yeah, it all, I think, Rich, it all comes down to money. I mean, having, having some experience with, with construction, somebody's gonna build it if they think, okay, I can build, either I can convert or I can build a building, and I'm gonna build a building for $450,000. And I've got eight units and I can sell those units for X amount and I make this much money. That's, that's the way it works. And that's all it's about, money.
I totally agree.
Except for some people that do it as a hobby if they have a lot of money. But, you know, but generally, that's the way it works, so.
And have we done any economic analysis to?
But that's not our.
You're missing my point. We don't, that's not all we did. That's exactly what the planning board shouldn't be doing. That's not our charge.
So what would happen if we said we'll offer, I mean, we've had some density bonus here of something, and it's economically unfeasible to build? What's the point of spending the time?
So it's a lot different if I try to do it, or Brett Ryan tries to do it, the economic feasibility is quite different, or if Estes and Gallup comes in and does it very different.
So I guess I'd ask, how, how would you determine that anyway? Because to Vicky's point, if, if somebody like Brett's doing something, it's a very different scale than if like an aging place group where people were trying to get together and form a group that would basically move into a house. How, how do you, how do you say definitively, well, this is, this is what it would cost?
You can't, because in here, the construction costs are all gonna be based on what people want for their own units, and if somebody wants gold-plated toilets, then the cost is going to go through the roof. If, you know.
Right, and if it's so arbitrary.
Development companies.
But you see, these things are not arbitrary. These things are not arbitrary.
Those elements are arbitrary, those elements are arbitrary.
But they can be reduced, I mean, I've, I've done this, John. I, I know something about this, I know about the Plinipole project, that there's an architect's cost, there are engineering costs, there's.
I'm sorry, Rich, we're not stupid, we know that there are these things, we all know.
And, and, and so it's the, I mean, I don't wanna put words in the board's mouth, but, so it's, not important to examine the economics?
I think it's important to get a general sense, a general understanding to the degree where if we're gonna go to the trouble to do something like this, it should be generally feasible. I don't wanna do something, you know, just for a show. It should be generally feasible. But I don't know how to make it specifically, you know, to come up, I mean, of course you can make, you know, any sort of a case about anything, but I don't. But I don't see how we can possibly come up with, look, just, just the, the build-out analysis, we realized, we're going to have to be pretty general. And any sort of feasibility is going to have to be very general. Because we, we're not going to have access to, first of all, the point Vicki made, the range of people who might be interested. We're also not going to have access to all the elements that different people are going to want in these things. But I think it's not that difficult to get a sense of whether something's feasible. And I'm sure between, between everybody on the board, including you, people can point out, well, this is feasible and this is not. It's, it's not going to be too.
But is the commerciality of planning board functional?
No, no. That, that, to me, that's the root question of whether or not.
I thi- I think we can consider feasibility, but I don't think that.
It's hard, though.
I think we're already answering that question, because we are responding to what the consultant said about the commerciality. And what we heard about was residential, so what we're trying to work with is residential.
Well, we heard two things, it was residential and senior house.
But to actually run the numbers.
No, we don't.
Or to try to change the planning and zoning wording to, to match the numbers. I don't see as an exercise.
No, no, you know, it, it's the market that drives that stuff. And, you know, we have developers, like, you know, I see it every day in Hanover, okay, do I keep this place the way it is, generating the income that it does? Or is it now time where I'm going to tear it down and build to the max and, and charge more? And so what we're getting is that tipping point, and I just met with a, a major landowner today, not Dartmouth College, and, you know, her decision is, yeah, I'm going to tear down the old house and maximize what I can on this lot.
Because she rents.
She's a landlord, yep.
So, I mean, so the build-out.
And she'd love to come to line.
I'm sorry.
She'd love to come to line.
Yeah. So, uh, I promised that I would write up my thoughts as to what senior housing would be.
Sure.
Let me, let me do that.
I'm going to let you.
Good, thank you. I, I, I'm done with this topic here.
Well, and.
I had a question, just like, what is attractive self-coverage?
Oh, you know, I wrote this two years ago, I can't even remember.
Okay, well, I don't really think that that's an appropriate thing to put in there.
It was, this is, this, this thing, the introduction? This introduction was not a zoning introduction.
No, 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 it's just like, warming up the reader, I get that. Okay, and with, with the fiber optic coming, I mean, that's, it's like around the corner.
Right, it's a game changer, yeah.
Yeah, this paragraph needs to be, because what I think we're going to have is a place structure.
The whole introduction, from my point of view, is obsolete.
Oh, okay, okay, because I really think that, you know.
It was two years ago.
What we are on the verge of is, you know, a new level of desirability in the town of Line.
Absolutely.
And I totally expect that things like conversions are going to be happening because of access to the fiber optic. I mean, it's pretty exciting.
It's, it's major, I agree.
Hopefully, there's, there's a tower going to be in Bedford that should be giving coverage in line. No guarantees, I've been talking with a company who wanted to put one up on ten, up on Green's property.
Yep.
But they backed out because the coverage from the, the tower that's being put in Bedford. So that should be.
Well, I, you know, I wasn't hollow, so I'm never hopeful.
Well, the, the intent for the tower north of here was to cover the downtown area. That was the.
Yeah, that would be great, yeah.
The biggest problem right now is that with these wonderful smartphones, the amount of bandwidth that people use has increased dramatically. And the towers can't handle it anymore. And so what used to be, if you notice in the rural areas, you used to, if you were near a tower, within, you know, five miles of a tower, you got good coverage. Now, if you notice, as you're closer to those towers, you're only going to get about two miles. They're actually dropping down the coverage range on those towers because they can't handle the bandwidth going out. So they're looking at having to put in far more towers. And then when they go to 5G, that's going to be even, or if they go to 5G, even not up here. Not going to work up here.
No, I mean, you have to have the mark every thousand feet, have an access point every thousand feet, which in the city is thinkable, but.
I don't think we're going to get 5G, or it's bad for you.
And it also really messes havoc with the.
Green function.
Well, the, um, the satellites that do the weather, they're, they use a passive sensor that is messed up by the 5G signal. So anywhere there are 5G towers, it just blankets out their ability to see what's going on.
Wow.
So, uh, is there any more on the zoning?
Do we need it? I couldn't think of anything we really need.
That's where we're laying the last meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd love to say, I think what we should be doing is spending more time on our subdivision regulations, in terms of regulatory work.
What would you like to do on the subdivision?
Well, we haven't ever adopted the kind of design stuff and, you know, or are there other sections of site plan that we want to amend? You know, so we get a little low on the action, and, but I, I don't really know that there's anything really pressing.
You mean beyond?
For zoning.
Beyond the senior housing, or, or you?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to look at this. I mean, let me just look at, like, Tracy Flickinger's house, and I don't think that that's sold. You know, it's, it's a big old place, two units, I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know what we said, because I think there's, septic does need to be.
Let's not talk about.
Yeah, but I know, but I'm just thinking that, yeah, I'd love to see, you know, six seniors living there. And the weird thing is, is that they all could move in. In fact, they could, you know, have, you know, you could have as many individuals in a dwelling in it, I don't know how many veterans are there, but you could, she has five veterans upstairs.
They don't have to be related.
Yeah, yeah, right. So there could be nine people housed in there in a, like, a, a house situation. It just, it's a, it could be commune, yeah. So it's not really a common. Right, 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 so.
But all the, excuse me, folks.
Don't want to live that way.
I mean, whether they do or don't, that's all personal choice, and whether they, it's the commerciality of it.
We're not talking, we're not talking about the commerciality.
But it's all.
If there are nine people that went, they could buy, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to be realistic and say that for that house, nine people could buy that. And, you know, they'd have to work out, you know, how they split, you know, just like any group is equal, but it is possible.
It's all legal.
It totally is.
You have to, you have to spend quite a bit to do it. But that's, that's, that's the cost of living.
Yeah, right.
And so for the planning board to spend time over, over and over again about what people could afford or can or cannot do, is not a planning. It's not a priority, yeah.
Well.
That, that is, that is, you can't fix that.
I, I think that feasibility can be considered, because what I said before, I don't want to go through an exercise, like, with the senior housing. I'm not, I'm, just wouldn't bother if it's not going to be feasible.
Well, what if everybody just asked for half the assessed value of their house? I mean, that would make things really feasible, right?
We talked about that last week, with some sort, some sort of, some sort of a financial incentive.
Right.
Maybe we run it up. Yeah, and not necessarily that same example, but some.
Yeah, but I mean, if, if, you know, if everybody weren't so, quote, greedy, they could sell their houses at cheap price so that people could afford to do conversions and have more, but you know what, no one's going to do that.
No, nobody's going to do that.
Because where do they go? I mean, they sell, and then they still need to have housing. And if you want to stay in the area, you know, good luck.
So, John, teach me just a little bit more about what you're trying to say as far as, as far as the senior housing, and then your, so your. You keep pointing to fact that it's like, well, it doesn't have sort of more to it, or more incentive.
Incentive.
That, you know, why bother?
Yeah. But, but look, to you, I, I don't know whether it was you, but somebody said, well, it can be done now, you know, it can be done with six, so then why bother? If it's, if it's not an incentivization.
But I thought, I thought part of, well, so maybe, I think maybe the answer might be, maybe it's not required, because I felt like, if the build-out analysis came back and said there was ten, maybe not the number right of it, you'd sort of look at it and say, gee, for the, you know, the longevity and vitality of the town.
Too restrictive.
It's too restrictive, we've got a problem. But for that, for that area, that, that Lyman Common District, and to have the capability to expand it to this type of number, makes you wonder whether or not you need to have anything to incentivize more development, because it appears.
It's, it's incentivizing a particular type of development.
Right, right, okay, so, so, okay, so, so then we do that by, how, so maybe we've, we've limited ourselves too much, handcuffed ourselves a little bit by just saying, okay, we're going to change the density and allow it to be smaller, you know, so.
Yeah, that's just, that's just one approach.
That's just one approach, so maybe we should open it up a little bit.
I consider completely open.
But here's, here's my question, is like, you know, we have the number twelve here, are there any lots that could actually have twelve units?
That's a very good question, because we, we didn't.
I would say five thousand.
I don't think we found any.
Well, we didn't, we didn't look.
Well, yeah, we did, because we looked at septic.
We looked at.
Yeah, we did look at septic, and so.
So we could look at, we could look at that.
I don't think there were any that they kept it.
No.
Well, the, the other possibility, if, if people.
That's the feasibility thing, so why light a lot while we don't have septic?
So, so if people are interested in pursuing this, the other possibility is to have it in the commercial district. You know, I mean, there are various approaches.
Yeah, well, I'm not saying it's any better down there, because there are a lot of weapons down there, so we just need a big.
I'm thinking, you mean, north of Pondview?
I think, you mean, the north part of Pondview?
Or north, the whole area north of Pondview from.
Of the building, on the Pondview property.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that, my impression was that it has a lot of potential.
And I know that Purcell is interested in doing something with it.
Yep. Now, are they going to come over?
They said they're going to rethink their stuff and come, I mean, uh, probably not.
So I guess what your suggestion is, is that the density enhancement could go beyond the district and also include the commercial district?
Or senior housing, yeah.
Or, or just the commercial district, or both, you know, I don't know, I don't have the answer.
Right.
But that's, that's what we can explore if there's enough interest.
I mean, septic technology's going to get better, but right now, it's, it's not. So that's, I don't, I believe what Rich was saying about opposing something that's infeasible, the twelve on the, twelve dwelling units, you know, in the, in the common, I don't remember.
So then we could make it eight?
Yeah, yeah, I think we need to drop that.
Yeah, because we also.
Not because I don't want more units, but because I don't think it's feasible, but then if we could find land other places, and, you know, then bump that up to twelve, where it would be feasible.
Or, or, I mean, that's, these are not magic numbers, you know, we can.
Well, it's doubling to six, so that would, I understand.
But you could, you could do eight, you could do ten.
Yep.
Could even do nine.
Yep.
All right, so what are the next steps that we take with this? You're going to come up with something?
I move the cable, you know, leave the discussion as it is now, I'll, I'll send something to David if we can look at.
But what, I mean, I know what you're doing, but does anybody else have any thoughts on how to proceed?
Well, I, I still want a senior housing amendment. I mean, I, I, now, I just think this needs to be refined, you know, to, like, the twelve was a problem for me. I don't have a problem with the eighty-five percent, so Tim and I need to work, you know, come to an agreement, but, yeah.
So can I ask anybody who's interested to work, you know, work on either their own language or use this as a starting point?
I didn't really have that much, I mean, I don't think it needs to be complex.
No, I think the less, the less complex, the better. And then the, the other thing to think about is whether, I think this allowed new construction under certain circumstances. And whether, whether we want that, or maybe we want that only in the commercial district, if we're going to do that. Do we, do we want new construction on the, on that scale on the common district? So I mean, that, that's something to think about.
Yeah, no, I, I do think about it, it's just looking at this project I looked at today in Hanover. I mean, it's a darn shame, because it's one of the oldest buildings in, in town. And it's certainly not, I mean, I don't really want to personally, because I may want to provide incentives for teardowns in our common area. Because I like the, the massing and the shapes and, and all that. I do want to provide incentives for people to be able to use those big buildings in an efficient manner that, you know, provides them with income and provides more housing. So that's.
Support towards conversions for senior housing?
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, just because Tracy's house has been for sale, I would hate it for somebody to tear that down and, and then build something else. Because the something else is, honestly, it looks, you know, they're, they're never going to have the detail and, and the same thing. So, yeah, that's, that's what I would like. And in terms of providing incentives, I mean, it would be nice to have money to help support, you know, there's structural problems in that house or something, to, you know, to support someone who is going to keep it looking the way it was, but, you know, bringing it to a better economic use with more units. I mean, that would be, you know, I'm just wishful thinking, but that's what I would wish.
All right.
I agree.
I mean, definitely sees more teardowns here.
Right, I, I think.
You see more teardowns?
This year, I've seen more teardowns of houses.
Yep. Which.
My house should have been teared down, honestly.
Yeah, yours should have, but down on River Road.
Oh, oh, right, right, yeah.
Which, uh.
The, um. No.
The Red Cross from Wilmot Way.
Right.
Oh, right.
The Ace Place? You were Lisa, or, or Becky Franklin?
Yeah.
That got torn down?
Yeah, that's gone.
It's gone.
Oh, I didn't realize that, wow.
It is gone. One point two million for the new house.
Yeah, yeah, well, this is what we're seeing, we're seeing million-dollar houses getting torn down in Hanover, I mean, that's ridiculous. But, yeah, but I think we were really lucky, you know, when the country store burned, that we got an architect willing to donate and, you know, to make the country store look like it does. We're so lucky, because that could look like, you know, Dollar General or a Combe's or anything. Yeah.
Back in the early eighties, middle eighties, maybe?
On, this is the Lyman Pressure Zone?
Yeah.
Yeah, burning the ground. So it's an interesting, the original building is a really historic building.
All of it.
It's an interesting thought about trying to preserve the, what could feel common in the homes with respect to not having them torn down, so, you know, maybe we should think about some sort of financial incentive. If, 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 you know, into, into, into the, into it, and if it did provide senior housing, that there would be some, if the structure remained, you know, the exterior structure remained as it was, and was, was, maybe there is something that should be done, because otherwise, I, I actually think that's a huge risk.
Right.
Yeah, well, the.
See, the problem is, Kevin, that today, people that built some of those good buildings, they want to build it as inexpensive as possible. So to do that, they have to make the outside look like a Dollar General, and that's the problem.
Right.
And so that, so the chances of a really god-awful ugly building being built are really high.
Really high.
When there's a new building.
Well, that's why I'm, from a planning perspective, I'm wondering if maybe there isn't some incentive.
Yeah, I was a member of the Harris Commission, I would support that.
For, for keeping, and I don't know what that would look like. And David went down this road a little bit, he might be able to help us next week when he comes back and talk about what small alternatives would be. Because, because that is probably one of, you know, I think the town's biggest risks, it loses its character. Because, because that is probably one of, you know, I think the town's biggest risks, is it loses its character when you drive through town.
So always consider historic district commission.
Yep, yeah, yeah.
My feeling exactly, but that's.
The regulatory stuff is really hard. I mean, I will say though, that, I mean, to the heritage, you know, if you're trying to accommodate seniors, lots of doorways are gonna have to be replaced because they're too narrow.
Right.
Yeah, but at least the outside.
And lots of, yeah, keep the outside, so we have to, like, give that up. And most bathrooms don't work for seniors either. So we're gonna have very extensive renovations with, you know, gutting on the inside.
So do, you know, that's something to think about. Do, do we wanna have it in the commercial district, or do we wanna have it elsewhere?
Right, well.
And that's why I think we should work.
No, 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 no.
We would not do anything at all.
No, that's what I think.
No, we would not help in any way, shape, or form.
Well, we've had this conversation.
I'll talk to you later, Kevin.
We've had a, this conversation.
I'll send you straight afterwards, Kevin.
I'll tell you the real.
Well, I guess what I'm wondering, and I, I'd really like to ask David, because he seemed like he had some experience in this. Yeah, let's, let's do it.
Of, you know, how to incentivize keeping downtown Lyman Common District as best we can, as we can hold, without, without each one having to do a backup.
Tear down a little, start building.
Well, maybe, maybe there's, maybe there's, I'm just spitballing here, maybe it's, you know, for the first five years, if they were, you know, if they agree to keep the structure as it is, that there's some sort of reduced tax rate. And you bring that to the legislative body of the town, and you say, this is in this housing, you know, here's what we're trying to achieve. And there's, there's some sort of incentive, you know, for folks to say, okay, I can afford to do this, I gotta keep the structure looking somewhat like it looks like today, and there is some financial break out of taxation perspective to make it where I can afford to do it.
I think you gotta go to the legislature to, you know.
No, that's what I'm saying.
You can't give, I mean, yeah.
No, that's what I said.
The legislature is gonna have to change that.
You can't do it with the town?
No, no.
I don't think so, I think the DRA sets the.
Yeah, tax breaks are, are given to town.
I said I was spitballing.
Yeah, well, it's interesting, but you have to go to the legislature and maybe it's for action, you know.
Kind of go, go back to something we were talking about before, because I've been regularly following workforce housing. And we have a legal responsibility for workforce housing. And we are, as far, you know, our, our report is that we're doing fine, but it's something to just keep in mind, because that does require feasibility, so.
Well, that could be for seniors. Because I think that's where a real need is, for seniors.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely could do workforce housing for seniors.
But they're not, they need workforce, so like, people like me who are over sixty who are still working, it'd be, that, so would workforce housing for seniors?
Oh, it could be senior housing that would be.
That, that would qualify for workforce housing.
That's where there's a real need.
But regardless, I mean, I just wanna point out that there is, there are, this is, that's a situation where feasibility is important. All right, old business, new business, monkey business?
New business, how's that?
Sure. Excuse me just for a second, so yeah, I get your point now, and maybe where you're at, I get it on the feasibility, and I hope you understand my point on the commerciality, and I, you know, I think there's some idea to keep those separate. You want it to make it where it's feasible, as far as the planning board working the commerciality aspect.
I, I think I underst.
Try to find people to go do all that, is that?
I absolutely agree.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good.
But, but, oh, you wanna ask a question?
Did you get a chance to check this view about the thing that we talked about, about Brett Ryan's question about having ADUs for seniors old?
I have not, no, okay.
Okay, and you have something?
I have a request from EverSource, they wish to do some tree trimming in scenic roads.
Bring them on.
What is your pleasure for dates for?
When do they want to come?
They really were kind of open, I was looking September twenty-sixth or October tenth would be.
What else do we have? Why don't we just batch them with plentiful when they come back?
Because I'm going to be inundated trying to get notices out for planning and zoning next week.
Well, there are no butter notices that need to go out, you just.
Well, in the past, the zoning, the planning board has asked.
Yeah, we've, we've asked, what we generally do is, is ask letters to go out.
Go out to everybody. Not certified, but just, and so that does take time to.
Oh, I know.
Create that list and.
Do you know which roads?
I have.
It's the scenics.
Yeah, I have the roads. Maple Lane, which I don't think is a scenic, but River Road, Washburn.
Law of River Road or?
It's a huge area, yeah.
Coming up from Hanover.
Yeah, I'm looking at the Eightpoint Hills, yeah, Twenty River Road all the way through.
Below the East Eppert Bridge or?
Yeah, that'd be.
All below the East Eppert?
No, that's where it starts, and then we're up to, up to five sixty River Road, which is gonna be.
Yeah, well, whenever you can get the things out, I don't know.
I mean, if, if the board still wants all the butters or the landowners on.
I think we have to.
It's vital, yeah.
Yeah, because.
The power company sends something to the landowners too.
Last, the last couple of times, that's what we did, because.
No, I, I know.
Because if something, if something, well, that's why we sent them.
Well, I know, I know, David, a year ago, over on, I guess it was, not on this part, but the road that comes up, the crossroads out there where the ISETS live, you know, they have that old cave that's on the right. They, the power company, or Asmark Cave, had pruned all the trees over there, and they were wild. They had no notice.
That's right.
They had nothing, they didn't know anything about it.
We don't want to pull around.
And they were gonna take it a corner, they called me, they were going crazy, because they cut all these maples that were really nice maple. And they hadn't lived there that long, so they didn't realize this happens. Anyway, they had no, for prior.
If the board wants me to do the makeup, the letters, I'll make the letters, that's.
All right, well.
But I guess, I have four days next week, and then I'm on vacation for a week. And so I need to adjust.
I don't think you should send out letters yet, I mean, first of all, we have to read, we should read that RSA, because this has some specific things, so if you can find that RSA.
Has to be noticed twice, at least seven days in advance of the hearing.
And I'm, yeah, so, and I'm thinking that what happened last time, you, you sent out the letters last time?
I sent out letters last time.
So I'm.
Actually, the last two times.
So, yeah, I remember the two, I'm wondering whether we can ask EverSource to send them?
EverSource supposedly puts a name tag or does in touch with all the people. They, they were in touch with me when they.
Yeah, they came by my place too.
Come to my place, and I got something at my door.
But I'm talking about.
The hearing.
The hearing.
Yeah.
Can we ask EverSource to do it? And, and really, you should.
There's statutory requirement.
Yeah, I don't think there is a statutory requirement to do it.
To do any direct mail notice, and so it's just.
We can ask them to pay for any mail that we do, and I've talked with him, he was perfectly fine to just invoice me.
So whatever the cost, whatever the notice.
Is that that guy Dean Darkangelo?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, he's accustomed to paying something, so he was surprised when Hanover didn't turn anything, so, but yeah, they'll pay.
So do, do we want that to be sent out before? I guess we have to do that before the hearing.
Well, the butter notices can go out anytime, because there's no statutory requirement for that. We have two, we do have legal requirements in the paper though.
Right, and that's not, I can set those up.
Right.
But it, it's the time that it takes to figure out all the addresses.
So why can't somebody else in the office help you do that?
We don't have anybody else in the office.
Patty Cashman is in the office.
She has enough stuff to keep her busy, and she only works four days a week.
If that, so is there, is there a way to do this, that, is there another way to do this?
Is there a timeframe?
The, the issue is, I'm, I have a week's vacation.
That's what I'm saying, is there another way to do it?
But is there a timeframe for the power company, for Asmark? I mean, do they wanna do it this fall or?
I, I don't think there's a huge timeframe, because they're not really weather dependent, they can do it in the wintertime, if you would not.
So we can wait till October?
Yeah.
Well, just do it when you can fit it in.
If we do it for October tenth, then it's absolutely not a problem. I mean, even September twenty-sixth, I can.
Yeah, let's.
So it really.
If they don't have a, they're not pushing you for time, right?
Sure, whatever works, then they're paid.
I just think that it's important to let people, really let people know.
And I have zero issues with that whatsoever, it's just, you know, like I said, I'm just.
Yep, okay.
Want to make sure I have time to do it, you know, I mean, just in light that I'm gonna be done for a week.
Yeah, I mean, nine out of ten times, it probably won't be an issue, but there's that one person that really, it's important to them. And actually, yeah, I think most people, you know, they, once they come home and they see what's happened. It's a very difficult situation, I, I'm just.
Really, yeah.
Because.
You want power, or you wanna keep the trees?
Right, and they're paying, you know, the, the, the power companies are paying to have that access, if you will, they pay taxes on there right away. But then when they come through and they do what they do to the trees, from an aesthetic perspective, what are you left with? And so you talk about scenic roads, and you want them to be scenic, and yet you've gone and taken away a lot of what makes them scenic, that being the tree cover, so it's a very, very difficult thing. And then, and then the worst part is, and, you know, Route Ten's gonna be a good example, is that they take a lot of that, especially the wood that's, that has no value, and you end up with these huge tree bogs just sitting there forever, so they're, you know, it's, I find, so. The whole.
Yeah, that's the problem.
The whole, the whole system of what's going on here is really bothersome to me, and then, no one's paying to remove what gets taken down, and then it just seems to me almost, if you're gonna go this direction, you almost go sort of whole hog and say, listen, this, this freeway is theirs, you don't do half the tree, you do the entire tree.
Yeah, well, they're on a five-year cycle, that's part of the problem, is when they, they prove it initially, it looks awful, because they take so much off, because they figure that I can back for five years, but it.
But, and it, it, you end up with just a misshapen, and then, and then if you wanted it down to.
Yeah, see, the PUC tells them that they.
That's what they can do.
Yes, that is there.
And, and then, and then you, and then you end up with, there's no scenic left.
No, there is scenic left.
And.
That's why we do underground.
Well, the, well, the other, the other problem, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
The other challenge from a road perspective, if you will, from a road agent's perspective, is that, you know, the tree's right next to the road, all that cover makes for a difficult maple. And so I just, we kind of go, it's like a, I don't know what the right word is, it's, um.
Well, and then the landowner.
It only means the objective of the power company.
It doesn't do anything, the landowner can cut down all the trees, so there's no protections. I mean, it's, I think it's kind of a stupid thing, because the scenic road law, because the landowner can cut every tree there, it doesn't matter. And then, you know, so when we're, we're faced with clearances like this, how is that supposed to be scenic? It means trees, and, and then it's, you know, an inconvenience for the town road agent to have to come in when he's gotta, like, take down a tree, he doesn't wanna take down a tree that's damaged.
Just take down, even just to make a ditch, the trees are in a little, what a ditch is supposed to be.
Damaged it so much, yeah, so the whole thing is, like, it doesn't do what it's supposed to do.
So that, that's, that's a big, you know, I'm just.
No, it's a big picture, it's like FEMA, why are we ensuring people to build houses in the floodplain or maintain our properties there?
So what, what actions do we want to take?
Well, I, I think back to the original conversation.
Send a letter.
We, we, we should, we should delay the cutting until David has the time to let the landowners know.
So then let's press, put the meeting further out and.
Well, I think at the twenty-sixth, I think it's gonna be fine.
Great.
Okay.
So thank you for allowing me just to express myself.
No, 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 it's, it's, the, the fact's even, and it also is better.
Well, I just find it to be, I just find it to be just a.
A floodwater.
It's, it's like, it's like this.
No, well, this is stupid, what is it really doing? Nothing, it's.
Well, it's keeping limbs from calling in the power lines and.
Well, that's the thing, is when you say to people, do you want that tree cut, or do you wanna risk not having power for two weeks? It's like everyone's gonna say, I want the tree cut, and, you know, that's what it comes down to, and.
Just they have a big generator.
Well, nobody, you know, it's loud, and when you've got a generator going underneath the bedroom window, so, you know, nobody wants that, so.
I have a large buffer of trees between myself and the road, and they come through, and they use herbicides in Vermont, and, but they come through and ask first, I'm like, it's sprayed away, but then I said, by the way, hit the whole hill, because I wanna. No, because where my driveway comes out, there's a hill.
Yeah.
And if they take all that foliage down, I can see up the road, and it'd increase my sight distance. So I'm like, well, you're at it, just get all of that for me.
You just mean for the ground to cover.
Yeah, yeah, well, they've gone through and taken all the, the larger trees out.
So, so what we're doing is, you're, you're gonna do the mound. That's, that's, that's okay with you. So, yeah, make a note that.
I think you should charge them for the costs.
Yeah, if, if they said, if they said that they're, they're willing to.
Yeah, I'll, he just said invoice me and I'll pass it on, so what I will do is just send out and just, you give them an invoice and say, here's the noticing costs, and, by the way, thank you.
I'll, I'll, that would take.
Yeah. And then he'll just pass it on.
So, all right, so we're done with that?
Yep.
So to your point about the subdivision regulations, do, do we wanna put that on the agenda for next time? As well as senior housing?
I'd like to focus on senior housing and try to get that done, because what we need to do is get a version that we love, so we can start shopping it around, so it's not a shock to anybody.
Right.
And, you know, and if, if we think that we want to put this in the commercial district, then we need to take a look at what's in the commercial district in terms of soils.
David had said that, when he gets time, that now that he's done, and correct me if I'm wrong, but now that he's done the build out, he could, he could do the commercial district.
It would be good.
Just a matter of, of.
Plug it in the number.
Plugging in the number.
Yep, and maybe this is the incentive that Purcell needs, I mean, if they're placed, I mean, if it turned into senior housing.
It'd be nice if, if they actually showed up and.
Well, that's okay, they, maybe, you know, they'll get really enthusiastic when they hear about this.
I think they get into this, their really busy season where they have a huge number of people moving out and moving back in and time, so, you know, they're trying to redo apartments between tenants, and so it's just bad timing, you know.
Right, okay, and my final question is, I don't know whether anybody can remember this, but we were working on a housing chapter when we got diverted. Do we want to go back and do that housing chapter?
No, I think we need to, yes.
Okay.
Because that would be a good background for senior housing.
Yeah, not a senior housing chapter.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so.
Then I get the next one.
Are we?
Thank, thank you, yes.
Are we done?
That's all I get.
Anybody else? All right, you are released, you shall be released.
Released. And thank Glenn again for.